Into order, we'll have the clerk call roll please.
Counselor Reese Camp.
Sorry, I missed it. I apologize. If will please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're off to a great start. Okay, now we'll have the clerk call roll please.
Counselor Reese Camp. Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Bowen.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Stoudt.
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have the consent calendar. We have the agenda for tonight's meeting, March 10. We have council minutes from February 10, regular session. We have a liquor license for 7-Eleven, off-premise liquor license application.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The consent calendar is approved. Now, bear with me. I have several proclamations to read, please. And the first step, we have National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month began in 1983 as part of a presidential proclamation to raise awareness of the alarming rate at which children were being abused, neglected, and whereas our children are most valuable resources, will shape the future of our communities. And whereas every child deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, and nurturing environment. And whereas child abuse neglect causes psychological, emotional, and physical harm, which can create lifelong problems for abuse victims, thereby impacting entire society. And whereas parents, families, and communities can help reduce child abuse and neglect by recognizing that prevention starts with each of us. And whereas the city of Lebanon encourages everyone to display blue ribbons or pinwheels at your home or business during the month of April as part of the National Child Abuse Prevention Month campaign to create awareness of the need to prevent child abuse and neglect. Paul R. Aziz, Mayor. Next up, we have Distracted Driving Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and deaths to motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists. And whereas the health and well-being of Lebanon citizens are a direct result of increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving, which occur when drivers divert their attention away from the task of driving to focus on another activity. And whereas more than 700 injury crashes involved distracted driving on an average day, and the economic toll of all motor vehicle crashes in the United States annually exceeds $400 billion. And whereas it is estimated that 1.6 million crashes per year can be attributed to cellphone talking and texting while driving. And whereas preventing distracted driving, injuries, and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and the general public. And whereas distracted driving is a serious, preventable, life-threatening practice, Lebanon Motors should dedicate themselves to adopting and maintaining safe behavior while behind the wheel. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, proclaim April as Distracted Driving Awareness Month and encourage all residents to increase their awareness of the dangers of distracted driving and promise to protect each other on the road through distraction-free driving behavior. National Library Week. Whereas libraries help lives change in their communities, campuses, schools. And whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of our communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of the library walls. And whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. And whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing Lebanon residents with storytimes, the summer reading program, and the Lego Club, Genealogy Society, and the Gift of Literacy. And whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas library staff and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, proclaim April 4th through the 10th as National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful resources available. And you know, as I read that, we can all look at that and think about the things that our library did to still get services out to the community even with COVID-19. It was amazing. The storytimes they did, the online things they did. I was following it and it was really, really good and they did a fantastic job. So they really altered their normal work style to still provide services for the kids. And it was fantastic and other people too. Okay, see. Next up, I have a little recognition. And this is for outgoing Counselor Karen Stoudt. Hi Karen. Karen Stoudt, City Counselor, Ward 2, January 2019 to March 2021. In recognition and appreciation for over two years of commitment, accomplishments, and contributions to the city of Lebanon. And that is what is written on the plaque and our city manager has that plaque for you. She's going to present that to you. And Karen, I just want to personally say thank you for all you did for our community. And you really stepped up. You had no experience in government other than working with the police department. And you just did a tremendous job and I just appreciate all your heart and hard work that you really took that job seriously. And thank you so much for that. And if any of the other counselors want to pipe in, feel free to. Go ahead Rebecca.
It has been a pleasure working with Karen as her wardmate. Is that a thing? Is that what we're called, wardmates?
I think so.
Okay, so anytime we've had a constituent that had something even slightly involving maybe neighbors feuding or anything that where her police experience really came in to play, it was invaluable to me. So thank you, thank you. It's been great. And I hate you for moving.
That's it.
Yes.
Well, you've been a great wardmate for sure Rebecca. And I really appreciated your guidance. You know, I would call you and ask you some questions again because this was a new field for me and I always appreciated your insight and your little snarkiness.
Rebecca said, but it was great to have you. I wish you were staying for the remainder of your term and maybe another one. But I would be hard pressed to pass up the opportunity to move to Central Oregon too. So enjoy that retirement and enjoy the exploration and look forward to catching a cup of coffee with you over there in Sisters or Redmond or something like that in the future and catching up. So enjoy.
Thank you very much Jason. I appreciate it.
I echo pretty much all of these comments here, other than Karen, it was great getting to know you. We both started at the same time. Also sad to see you leave. But as Jason said, I would not pass up an opportunity to move to Central Oregon either where the sun shines probably like 300 days a year. So kudos, work that you've done. And I look forward to catching up with you as well.
Thank you.
Karen.
I appreciate it.
Karen, all right, thanks again Karen, appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have the annual Tourism and Transient Room Tax Report. Rebecca Grizzle was putting on a different hat and her glasses as the Chamber Commerce Director.
Yes. Well, good evening, everybody. And this is the time of year that normally we recap what the transient room taxes, which comes from the hotel taxes, and is a portion of which always the chamber has an agreement to take. Some of it goes to operating our tourism center and some of it goes to local organizations like the Strawberry Festival might come and apply for a grant to help with tourism. Of course, none of that happened because there were no events last year. So if you'll recall, this time last year or shortly thereafter, we entered into an agreement to accept $0 from the city for two quarters. So we used some of the existing money that we had in that account built up to maintain the tourism center. So I really don't have any of that to highlight. What I wanted to highlight a little bit is what we did do that was really important and impactful to the businesses this year. And I really think 2020 was a year of key partnerships for the Lebanon Chamber. When we first started with COVID, of course, one of the first grants that came down was a grant that was being administered through Central Lebanon. And it was mainly focused on women and minorities and we were able to connect. It was a very specific grant. So there weren't a lot of people that qualified, but we were able to get a grant into the hands of a woman business owner right off the bat. We helped, we partnered with the city of Lebanon and of course Kelly and Alicia were fabulous. And we've talked about that before, but it would be hard to hard to overstate how useful they have been as far as connecting us. Now, the city had a grant going to businesses. So we connected and helped them connect with city money. But they also were really instrumental. We partnered with the Albany Chamber and Lynn County to come up with the Lynn County Small Business Outreach Program. We call it the Lynn, what, SBOP, Small Business Outreach Program. And that actually was money that was funneled through the county. And we were, we took in over 40 applications throughout the county. And we distributed, we helped approve and distribute $650,000. A little over 500,000 of that went to Lebanon businesses. So that was extremely impactful. We had a lot of a lot of tears and it was joyful to be able to help people stay in business. We partnered with the Downtown Association, again with grants. The city got a PPE grant for, with hand sanitizer and masks and, oh gosh Kelly, what all was there? There was wipes and sanitizing spray. And so we are distributing still. And there may be another grant coming with some more PPE equipment to distribute those to. And it's intended for businesses that are 50 employees or less. So small businesses again. We partnered with the Gilat Home Team and Extreme Graphics to put together Shop Local Campaign through the Christmas time and it actually is just now winding down. We've extended it. It was a great shop local campaign. And then we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club to do the Drive-In Theater Project downtown, if you are downtown at Cheetah Lake. And that was great. And we actually, this weekend at the Oregon Festival and Events Association, we were recognized, we took a prize, we won the Hidden Gem Award for that. So we have an award-winning little event that came out of our little lockdown. And so that's what I have kind of the majority of partnerships that we forged. Do you guys have any questions for me? Jason, you looked questiony. No? All right. So that's really it. Next year, it'll be a little more dynamic. We're hoping to, we have started again, we've just gotten our first check to start building the account back up so that when events start happening, we can get them some help. Everybody's going to need extra help this year once the ball gets rolling. Assuming, now I know the Strawberry Festival, I think, is planning on having the festival and I believe they have three plans. Or most events are like that. You know, we don't know how many people are going to be able to be outside. Are we going to, what phase of COVID we're going to be in. So but assuming that those events move forward, they're going to need money and we're going to be able to handle those requests again.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you Rebecca.
Thank you.
Next up is public comments and we have received one and that is from the Lebanon Downtown Association. I'll read this from them. Downtown was hoping for First Friday in March with the game of hide and seek. Or, oh, I'm sorry, downtown was hopping, not hoping. My mistake. Downtown was hopping for First Friday in March with the game of hide and seek to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. Over 200 people came out to enjoy the celebration. Next month, the Lebanon Downtown Association will hold a poker run for First Friday. Check the Lebanon Downtown Association website for more information at lebanondowntownassociation.com. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing. And the public hearing for annexation A2101 is now open at 6:16 PM. Your patience is appreciated as our city attorney goes through the required hearing process procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's, can everybody hear me all right? I'm using a new headset.
Yes, sounds good.
We are operating tonight under the temporary provisions of House Bill 4212, which provides for virtual public hearings in the state of Oregon during the COVID pandemic and in compliance with ORS 197.763. At the commencement of the hearing, all counselors shall or should amount now to any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. If you have any questions as to what a ex parte contact is or a conflict of interest, please feel free to ask me either tonight or ahead of time. We will start tonight's hearing with the staff report. It will be presented by staff and it should include information which staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulations, which staff believes to be relevant to the issues of the hearing. But then a lot of questions of staff by council. We'll then have public testimony pursuant to House Bill 4212. The city has invited the public to submit either written testimony or appear electronically tonight. I would note that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. Please note, and very importantly, a failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Tonight we'll have testimony of the witnesses, including the applicant. It is the applicant who has the burden of proof. Therefore, the applicant will be provided the opportunity to go first and provide rebuttal testimony if necessary. I will start with the proponents, the applicant and proponents of the application. We will then have any opponents of the application. And we will then have rebuttal if necessary. We'll then close the public hearing. And it will be for deliberation by council only. No new evidence will be allowed. Generally, we will have a decision tonight, although there are other options. With that, Mr. Mayor, you can ask if there's any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest to disclose.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Do any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias?
Go ahead.
Was that it? I did hear something. Was that a no? Just want to make sure.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, have any comments regarding objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case? Has it been received?
No, sir.
Thank you. Will the Community Development Director please present the staff report?
Yes, sir. Before you tonight is a proposed annexation for the property at 998 West Airport Road. Subject property is 0.72 acres in size with approximately 116 feet of frontage along airport. Property to the west and along with the public right of way is within city limits and therefore the site is contiguous to city boundary and eligible for annexation. The property is within a developed neighborhood. To the north, south, and east, our residential property is within the city's urban growth boundary with a comprehensive plan designation of residential mixed density. And they are all improved with single-family residences. The property to the west is within city limits with a zoning designation of residential mixed density. And it's improved with a mix of multifamily development duplexes along with single-family residences as well. The subject property is improved with an existing single-family residence along with a couple of accessory buildings. City water and sewer service along with storm drainage are available in Airport Road within the vicinity of the property. And upon annexation, the applicant would be able to extend city utility services to the site. The staff report provided in the agenda packet provides a detailed analysis of the required review criteria and recommended findings for how the proposed annexation meets the requirements for annexation. And generally speaking, the criteria can be met as the property is contiguous and eligible for annexation and the applicant is accepting the first zoning designation of residential mixed density. And therefore, the site and use, the site use and any future development is consistent with the established zone and is able to be accommodated with the existing facility master plans. So with that, I will conclude my staff report and I'm available to answer any questions. And we also have the applicant available tonight to speak. We have not received any public comment in favor or opposed or any request from the public other than the applicant to participate in the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have any questions for staff? Okay, we've received no comments. And if that's the case, then we are closed at 6:21 PM. Council discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
I will. As soon as I get there. I thought there'd be a little bit more talk. Only got one screen tonight. All right. There we go. Ordinance bill number 2021-05, ordinance number 2961, a bill for an ordinance annexed in zoning property following consent filed with city council by landowner in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file A21-01, Jason Cadwell.
Call for motion?
Move for approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2961. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ordinance is passed. Thank you Trey. Okay, next up, we have interview for Ward 2 city council applicants and appointment. At this point, we're going to have the two candidates kind of move off into the lobby area. And we're going to have a little discussion and then we'll have, we'll bring each one of you in and have our interview with you individually. So it's just not fair. We didn't want one to see the other interview and then the second one doesn't get to see the first interview. So just thought it'd be a little more fair that way. Are we okay on that Andy?
Yeah, he's working on it. Bear with us here.
Okay, no problem. Nope, they just disappeared.
I'll say it on my end, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Andy. Oh.
Hold on.
Hold just a second, sorry.
Yep.
We still live streaming?
We are.
What's that?
You guys are canceling each other, I think.
Oh, I asked if we were still, are we still live streaming?
We are, yes Jason.
We are, yes.
So does that work?
Okay, they're both in the waiting room.
Yeah, they're both in the waiting.
They have been asked not to view the live stream.
We took care of that. Okay, we have two candidates. You've got, does everybody have their sheets and their applications that were sent out?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll be going with David Wayne McLean first because his application came in first. And the way I would like to do it is do him, then he'll go back out in the waiting room and then we'll bring in Gamil. And then we'll do his interview and then we'll have our discussion. And then we'll bring them both back in and then we'll announce who we've chosen, which is very similar to the way we did it last time in person. It's just, we're just trying to do it a little electronically this time. So.
Pick a comment before we get too far.
Sure, sure.
We afford to have three Waynes on the same council?
That will, yeah, I didn't even thought about that.
He goes by David, so you don't have to worry about that.
That's good. Okay, so is there any other questions or comments on the process? If you guys don't like this process, this is just what I remember we did last time and want to try and keep it the same.
It worked.
Okay, all right. And so at this point, I don't get my questions here. Now, the one thing I did not figure out and I wanted to see what you guys wanted to do is on the questions. Did you want to go around? Did you want to pick a question particularly? Probably be better if each one of us asked a question. There's one, two, three, four, five. We've got six questions. And there's six counselors. That works.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, do you want me to just assign? Do you guys want to pick one? You want me to assign? I can do it anywhere.
Why don't you just assign them?
Okay. All right. Number one's Jason. Number two is Rebecca.
Right.
Number three is Wayne Dykstra. I'm not really looking at these questions. I'm just putting numbers to them. Number four be Michelle. Number five would be the other Wayne. And six would be Karen. And I'll referee. And then what we'll do is after we do the interview, have them go back into the waiting room and then we can discuss that. Well, actually, we'll discuss them all, I think, at once. It'd probably be easier to do a big round table discussion. Okay, everybody's got their question?
One, we're letting David McLean in first, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, and then second, the discussions and the post-discussions are all going to be an open session. Is that also correct?
It's still going to be an open session, but they're going to be in the waiting room when we do the discussion. I think that would be a little easier for us unless you guys feel different. I just think that would just be easier to do that while they're in the waiting room. Again, that was the way we did it last time is we had them back in the room. So first candidate, then we'll have the second candidate, then we'll have the discussion and then bring them back in.
All right, David McLean is now going to be joining.
Okay, thank you. Hi David. You can go ahead and unmute. We'll let you talk this time.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your application. We really appreciate it. Thank you for your service on the Planning Commission in our community. We've got some questions. Each counselor is going to go around and ask some questions and go back and forth and other counselors might have some questions. It is Zoom, so it's a little tricky. So we'll try and navigate this best we can. It's not the easiest.
If my computer doesn't work just right, I can always blame it on the guy that works on my computer.
Okay. Okay, let's go with the first question, Jason.
All right, David, what do you perceive to be the three most important issues facing Lebanon?
Well, I'm kind of nervous. So I wrote down a lot of notes in anticipation of what I thought you guys would ask. I think that three issues, three big issues that are going to face the city of Lebanon is number one, our homeless crisis that I think we're getting ready to encounter. And that goes hand in hand with the drug issues that we have here. I think that another issue is the growth that we're going through. I think it's moving along pretty fast and pretty smooth. I think that that is one of the biggest issues that concern most people. And then security. Personally, I think the Lebanon Police Department and the Fire District are Personally, I think the Lebanon Police Department and the Fire District are doing an excellent job. And, you know, I think that that's something that as counselors, we can stay on top of and make sure that it keeps going that direction.
I'd like to do a little follow-up, David. With you working on the planning commission, you have a pretty in-depth knowledge of our growth and the planning process in our community. How do you feel that the growth is going? Do you like it? Would you like to see it slow down? What is your, your feeling on it?
Well, I think the growth is going fine. I don't think it's going too fast. My personal preference is that we grow as a bedroom community more, more than an industrial community as such. And I think that we're in that direction and I'd like to see it keep going in that direction.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Rebecca.
Alright, good evening. It is nerve-wracking and especially nerve-wracking on Zoom, so it's not a high, high-stress group, so it's okay.
Good.
What areas of Lebanon do you think present an opportunity for redevelopment and revitalization? And what do you think would be an appropriate approach for the city for those?
Well, I'd like to see something happen in that section of town where the primrose area is. I know that eventually that area will be swallowed up by the city and, and I think it would have been nice to have it done yesterday. But for that area to eventually get annexed into the city so we can kind of clean it up and make Lebanon a little more livable. I don't know if you've driven around that area or not, but it seems to be an issue with the Lebanon city limits around that area of town and that remaining in the county, so.
Are you talking about Porter Park area?
Yes, yes, and the Primrose and Taylor Street and in that area there. I know that, you know, it's, it's a, it's an issue for the city police to have to go in there and police that area because it is the county. I'd like to see that area grow into the city instead of, you know, fighting to stay out of the city.
Okay, any other question from counselors?
Just to follow up on that, so I understand your concern with that vastly, but how would you, the second part of that question was what do you think would be an appropriate approach for the city to take on that opportunity? With that being county jurisdiction at this point, to bring in the city would require significant infrastructure and, and development in that area. How would you propose that the city deals with that unplanned for expense?
Well, I, I think that eventually the primrose area will be engulfed in the city of Lebanon. It will become part of Lebanon. But if we just, you know, keep up the annexations, keep approving those annexations, I know that, that the, the land there has to be contiguous with the city so we can, you know, run services to it. But I think that the city Lebanon is in the right direction on, on getting that primrose area taken care of.
Anyone else follow? Okay, Wayne. Go ahead.
David, do you see that area as being a health hazard at this time or has been or can be?
Absolutely, absolutely. If you just drive down the street, the streets over there, you'll see that, you know, the trash piled up and, and, and the people living in Swaller basically. You know, it's, it's an issue for me because I take care of the properties around, around that area, all that property behind. The pawn shop and Crockers, you know, I've cleaned up that property. I've cleaned up the homeless camps. I've picked up the poop bags and the needles. And, and, and it just seems like a lot of that comes from that Primrose area and it just oozes over, over into the rest of the city. You know, that's one of the things that it's always been a concern to me is, is that area and it's kind of a. It's kind of a nest for just bad things to go on.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, Wayne. Anyone else follow up? Okay, with that, we'll move on to Wayne Dykstra.
Okay, as a city counselor, you sometimes have to make some unpopular decisions. How would you handle those who criticize you or even criticize a decision that you made?
Well, sometimes I don't articulate well and, and I think that that is one of the key things to settling those kinds of issues and problems. With people that disagree with you or get mad at you because you made a decision that they didn't agree with. You know, that's, that's a real touchy one and I'm sure that all of you go through that from time to time. Here from your neighbors or other people in town that, that they don't like the decision that you've made. One decision that in particular that comes to my mind is, is when we decided to go ahead with the apartments on 12th and Airport. There was a lot of citizens that were up in arms about that, but you know, it just came down to, you just have to, you know, follow the law, follow the ordinances. Do they meet the criteria? And the more successful you are at explaining that to people that disagree with you. I think the easier the tensions are.
So did you have people contacting you about that decision?
I did. I did. There was a couple of people that were upset with me because I, I was for the development. And, and it's no secret, I am pro-growth. I am for development. You know, the, the company that is building those apartments, they, they met the criteria, they, they met the requirements. And there was absolutely no reason not to approve that. I felt that, that along with the housing prices that we have in Lebanon, that it was the most sensible thing to do was to approve that.
Okay, any other follow-up questions from counselors? Okay, seen none. Michelle, would you like to ask your question?
Absolutely. Hello, David. My question for you is, what do you see as key elements in a productive relationship between the mayor, city manager, and the council?
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. What do you see as the key elements in a productive relationship between the mayor, the city manager, and the council?
I would say the most important thing would be the communication between, between all of those involved. There's, you know. Communication. I mean, that's the, I think that's the big thing right there is that they, they communicate, they sit down and honestly openly discuss. Things that they agree on or disagree on and, and do so in a private meeting, not out in public.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Okay, seen none. Wayne Reese Camp.
David, if selected, what would be your top three priorities as a city counselor?
Well, I think that the number one thing is tackling the homeless problem that we have. I, I think the homeless problem is only beginning. I think that maintaining the, the growth that we're experiencing, I don't think it's going too fast. I don't think it's going too slow. And, and maintaining the, the security that we have with the police and the fire department. Those are, I think, the three most important things.
Any follow-up?
I have a follow, I have a follow-up. David, in terms of the security in the police department, do you feel that we are understaffed about right for the size of our city? Your opinion in terms of that?
Well, the FBI recommendations state that, that they believe that we should have 2.1 police officers for every thousand residents. I think we're just, I think we're just under that. I think we're at 1.9 right now, officers per thousand. You know, it's like clean drinking water. You know, you'll pay anything for good water, you know, once you've had bad one. It's like you'll pay anything for good police force, once you've had, you know, a bad police force or a high crime area. Karen probably knows this better than anybody else, that, you know, if you don't. You know, stay on top of, of keeping your police force funded and your, in your fire department and those social services. If you don't keep those things funded, they can, you can get behind on those and you can lose it pretty quick. Right now, I don't think that we have a huge criminal problem in Lebanon. We do have a criminal element. And I think that the reason that it's not that bad right now is because we do have ineffective police force and it is staff.
Thanks, David.
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, David, I had a follow-up on the homeless issue. You brought it up twice now and I just kind of wanted to get a little more of a glimpse into what your vision of that is. And I guess what you see the problem as being and how you see the city being a part of some sort of solution.
Well, I, I think the city can play a big role in that. You know, I, I dealt a lot personally with the, the homeless situation, being that I, I have a contractor that's gone out and cleared up the properties and beat down the briars and cleaned up the homeless camps and, and stuff. And I think that the city should have a full-time person that, that, a task force, if you would call it, that would deal with the homeless crisis here in Lebanon. Right now, you know, it's not terribly bad, but all it takes is for Eugene or Corvallis to say, hey, we're done dealing with homeless people. And pretty soon, we've got, you know, 100 homeless people moving into Lebanon. I think that we've only seen a little bit of the problems that are coming at us and I think that if we get ahead of it. We would save ourselves a lot of trouble and money. I would like to be involved in that if I was on the council. You know, I've dealt a lot with the homeless people. I cleaned up a lot of camps. I knew the guy that was murdered on a first-name basis. I saw him around town and I talked to him every now and then and, and I was really surprised to hear that he was murdered. Simply because he was such a passive man. He was real easygoing and, and I was sad to hear that he, that he, his life ended. But, but I, I think that, you know, I, I've read what council is doing right now and I think that's definitely in the right direction. Go out and see what other towns are doing and what they're doing to solve their problems. My way of solving problems is first thing I do is I identify a problem and analyze it. And then I devise a plan to take care of the problem and then I execute the plan. So it's a three-step process. And I think right now Lebanon's in the first step just by identifying the problem and, and addressing it. Now it's a matter of devising a plan and then executing that plan.
That was kind of my question. What's your plan? It's obviously put a lot of thought into this. I'm curious to hear what your plan is. Are you an advocate of, of a permanent shelter? Are you an advocate of a small home community? What's your plan?
Well, I think that a small home community might be a bad idea. I think, you know, it's, it's like feral cats. If you start putting out food on your back porch for feral cats, you're going to have 100 feral cats on your back porch. If, if, you know, if we make it too easy and make life too comfortable, you're going to have every homeless person from Eugene and Corvallis and Portland moving here. And that's not what we want. I mean, we want to take care of our own and we do have a homeless population that we need to do something with. As far as taking steps to, number one, identify what problems are and I think drugs have a lot to do with it, heroin and meth. And then number two, come up with a plan. I think that a designated area where they can go with porta-potties and a place to, you know, wash up would be ideal. I don't think that that would be overdoing it. I think it would be a way to help. Then there would have to be some kind of a system in place that there would have to be an outreach to these folks to find out exactly what their problems are. And, and say, hey, you know, what can we do? Approach it as what can we do to help you, you know, better your life or get in a better place? Or find a job or, you know, your housing or whatever. A lot of these homeless people are on social security. They do have an income. It's just that they choose to spend their income on, you know, heroin and, and, you know, expensive cell phones or whatever. But I think that a lot of them just need a little push, a little bit of help, you know, someone to say, hey, you know, we care about you. You know, what can we do for you to help you get out of this situation?
Okay.
Mayor, I have a follow, I have a follow-up on that.
Go ahead.
David, what's your thoughts on what a homeless shelter should look like or provide? And does it cause a migration to it?
A homeless shelter could be something as simple as just a place to park an RV or, or pitch a tent. You know. To the more elaborate, you know, housing, apartment housing, whatever. But I, I don't think that, that we should offer something like, you know, free apartment housing and stuff like that. But I think that we should take steps to, you know, give them a place to go. Because here's, here's the reality. They're going to be camping out on sidewalks and in our parks and make, you know, the town unlivable for most of our residents or they can't go to the park with their kids. You know, they need, these people are down and out. They have needs. They're humans just like us. And they, all they need is a little bit of help and, and a way out of their situation.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
Any other counselors? Karen, were you? Okay, alright, and last question, we'll have Karen Stotter.
Okay, do you have any additional comments or questions for the council?
Yeah, you know, I, earlier today I was going over the budget. And, and that's, I'll be honest with you, one of my weaknesses is, is financials. And I, I just had a lot of questions about the budget, but I won't get into that. So. So, um, uh, I, one question I did have was, uh, is there enough, wiggle room in the budget to get something started on homeless situation?
That's probably a pretty deep question, uh, city manager Nancy. Cause that's, that's, that's tough. And, and honestly, uh, David, I gotta say, I'm the same way about budgets. I've had to learn a lot, uh, on the job on this one because the city budget is intense. It's huge. What's neat is we have an actual finance director as our city manager right now. Uh, we have a great finance director, uh, and we've really improved, I think in the last 10 years, really improved the whole, uh, budget process, made things a little more streamlined. But it is, it's tricky. Um, Nancy, did you have anything to say on that?
Well, I'd like to start by saying budget is the best thing we do as an organization. So y'all just need to get on the right side of budgeting here. Um, uh, I, I was gonna, so, um, I would say in the current year budget, no, there's no wiggle room. We are working on, uh, the fiscal year 21, 22 budget. Uh, we are not far enough along to know whether or not there will be wiggle room in it. Um, we do have a lot of demands for resources and, um, as always, not as many resources as we have available for the demand. So, um, over the next several months, we'll be putting together a proposed budget and we're scheduled in early May to start meeting with the budget committee to lay out, uh, what we have, uh, resources available, how we expect to use that, uh, that money in the coming year and then have those discussions.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, David, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And, uh, we're gonna put you in the waiting room for a few minutes and, uh, we're gonna interview the other candidate. And then we'll bring you both, both back in after we discuss a little bit.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think we're good here. I see a screen but no video. There we go. Hi, Gamil. And I've always known you as Mr. Jeeves. I need to know, is it Gamil?
Mile. Yes.
Come out. Okay.
Come on.
I just, I hate, I know I've got a zeece going on and I get that all over the place. So I understand.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're gonna go around and each counselor is gonna ask you, um, a question and then we'll do some follow-ups after that. And then, uh, when we're all done, we'll put you back in the waiting room and then we'll do a discussion and then we'll bring you back in and make our decision. Okay?
Very well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, and thanks for your time. Uh, I appreciate that. And your willingness to serve on the council. Uh, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a thankless job at times, quite honestly. And, um, but it's a fun job and it's an important thing. And it's, it's just neat to see people who care about the community and I know you do. So thank you again for your time, uh, in doing this. So first up, we're gonna have, uh, Jason Bowden is gonna ask his first question.
I'm gonna call you Mr. G because I just think that's pretty cool.
Yes, sir.
So what do you perceive to be the three most important concerns facing Lebanon right now?
Um, I, I've been studying. So I have some notes and I have my notes digitally. So if it, if it looks like I'm not looking at you, it's good. I'm looking at my notes. That's okay. And secondly, I want to thank, uh, you, the mayor, council and staff for giving me an opportunity to, uh, do this. And I look forward to, to, uh, doing well and hopefully, uh, working with the, the leadership team. So, uh, top three issues, um, me, number one is financial stability, the ability to move forward with a healthy budget that works for the city and the people of Lebanon. Uh, livability in the community. You know, there's, there's, there's the issue of having a thriving community, but we have our issues like the homeless and, and housing and, and all these things. Mental health and the general health of the community, the, all these things get into each other. You can't work with one without having to, to consider and, and work with something else to make them all work together. But top three, if I had to choose three, I'm thinking financial stability, um, the homeless situation and the, you know, livability in the community, making sure that, that everything we do works for the people. The families and the children and the businesses in, in what we hope to be a thriving community.
Okay. Any follow up from counselors? Okay. Number two, Rebecca.
All right. Good evening. So what areas of Lebanon do you think present an opportunity for redevelopment and revitalization? And what do you think would be an appropriate approach for the city for that?
Well, looking at some of the plans that have, that have been in place from, from, you know, the 2040 plan, the, the business plan that was set, uh, almost 10 years ago now and, and our, um, 2017, 18 city council gold review. It looks like that we have some urban renewal areas, uh, downtown area. You know, Northway, Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal, Old Russell Drive, Cheetah Lake. So I think that overall, I'm not gonna say that I have a huge, I have a lot of experience and be able to exactly which particular area. You know, and I know what needs help and, you know, some of the things I would do, but I think it's time, if, I'm on, on, if I'm chosen to be on the council right now, it's time to listen. It's time to learn. It's time to, to, talk to the partners that be, I didn't get a chance, for example, to, to meet with, um, Stevenson and, and talk about the things that he, that he finds, uh, are needed in the community and some of the, uh, other counselors as well as the city. But not being on, on, on the commission, my counterpart, uh, it's hard to know all the areas and be very specific. But I do know that the city of Lebanon is very cognizant of the areas that need help. We do a lot of work towards making those improvements. I do know that, that, you know, we have a lot of plans in place. We have a lot of urban renewal districts in place. Uh, one of the, one of the comments I found is that Lebanon had more urban renewal districts than some of the other towns. And that's because we know, uh, how we want our town to look. We have a really good idea of what, you know, the city, the, the friend that has built, what we want it to look like. The decision moving forward is whether or not we want it to, to stay a sleepy town or, manufacturing in, increase jobs, um, so all that plays into, into improving the areas. And I, I can't tell you that, that, uh, I can be very specific on, you know, on streets and avenues. But what I can tell you is that I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to listen and figure out what needs to be done and execute the plans that, that could make the, make that happen.
Okay. Any follow up from counselors? Okay.
One.
Next.
Oh, go ahead. I almost missed my, I almost missed my opportunity there. So the second half of that question, um, you know, is what do you think would be an appropriate approach for the city? So, um, it's okay not acknowledging, I think, specific streets or whatever, but, um, you know, what, knowing that there are these areas that need that, what would that appropriate approach, I guess, be is what I'm just trying to get to that second piece of that question.
Okay, sure. Well, first I think, uh, what I would do is look at the plans that are in place. Look at the 2017, 2018 plan. Look at the, uh, there's a plan that was set 10 years ago. This year, 2021 and, um, review those, refresh those, uh, look at the, the areas that we already have stipulated as urban, urban renewal districts. And also look at the areas that might need help and then figure out how we can implement into our plan, whether it's make, make those districts larger or find specific needs that are required for those areas. More than likely, it's pretty much very similar in terms of either infrastructure, uh, cleanup or bringing certain businesses or certain types of homes into the area to make that happen. So I think number one, whatever you do is look at the plans, uh, and, and, um, kind of find a cohesive plan if you don't already have one, that makes, that brings those areas in and/or improve on what we're already doing.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next up, Wayne, uh, councillor Dexter.
He is a city where, uh, sometimes, um, have to make unpopular decisions. How would you handle those who criticize you or maybe a decision that you have made?
Uh, over my career, I've been, I've had to make a lot of unpopular decisions, uh, running schools, running organizations, uh, working for nonprofits, uh, working with, political entities, governments over the years. And what I find helps is communication. Talking to the, the stakeholders, getting information from the stakeholders, because when you bring the stakeholders in and get that buy-in, we understand that we're not always going to get our way. But knowing that we have, uh, that we were listened to, that we were heard helps with the, idea that not every situation is going to be positive for me, for my, for those that I care about. At least it can be productive. And the way it's productive is making sure that I feel I have, my voice was heard, I have buy-in and, um, that people listen to what I had to say. So understanding that being part of this leadership team doesn't always mean that, uh, people are going to like the decision. There are ways, I think, of mitigating some of that by communication, listening and, and also getting that communication up there. So that people understand why you made a decision, even if they don't necessarily agree with.
Okay. Any follow up from counselors? All right. See none, Michelle?
Thank you. Um, so my question for you is what do you see as key elements in a productive relationship between the mayor, the city manager and the council?
When honest and illegal. And I think again, that, uh, making sure that all stakeholders are listened to, are heard and that you fully investigate the situation, uh, pros and cons and sharing that information amongst the team would help in, in a thriving and, and, uh, productive relationship between everyone. I, I've had plenty of, of opportunities to have relationships with people that did not like me. And actually I've learned a lot, you know, in those relationships because, just because you don't like somebody, it doesn't mean that you don't have a relationship in terms of open and honest communication, uh, fair, just all those things that make us, you know, great human beings, uh, we have to remember in having communication with individuals and as a group. But I think that, um, candid communication is obviously necessary. In, in groups like this, obviously in writing helps. Sometimes you have to have verbal communication to make sure that, that, that your, your point is, is heard, especially when you're passionate about something. And, um, I think that, that, that's what you need to, that's, that's what needs to happen. You know, that type of communication with, uh, amongst the leadership team.
Any follow up questions? Okay. See none. Uh, Wayne R. in the, uh, battle room in there.
Mr. G.
Sir.
If selected, if selected, what would be your top three priorities for the city councillors to do?
One of the things that I wanted to make sure is that I did not come into this with a, a passionate agenda. Um, I know that I, I was not born here. I was not raised here, but I love Lebanon. If you saw, um, my application, fell in love with it the moment we took our first drive. And, um, the, the work that I put in, in terms of volunteering and caring for the community is, is important to me. So I can't say that I, I, you know, I, the homeless situation is something that needs to be dealt with, right? I, I wanna look at, at the housing situation in terms of are we, are we headed for a debacle that's going to cause people to, to, you know, lose their homes after they just purchased it a year or two ago? Are we, are we, um, are we providing, um, adequate homes for young home buyers? Are we in a situation where as our children grow, they want, go out on their own, can they stay here in Lebanon? Do they have to go to Albany to find work? Do they have to go to Corvallis? Or can they live here and find work here and find a reasonable home that they can purchase, uh, as their starter home? Over, how are we dealing with COVID right now in terms of, I know that it's, it's, it's near its end. It's what we hope. If there's a possibility that other things might happen, so are we prepared for that? But I can't say that there's three things that I want the councils to do. The question was what would I want the councils to do? I think right now for me, it's kind of feeling myself, you know, kind of feeling around finding out what's important to the council. Uh, I wanna, I wanna find out what's, what's important to my ward, what's important to the outlying areas as well as the rest of the city. I know that, um, creating relationship with some of the outside cities and areas is important to me. For example, Sweet Home, even before we started looking at doing, um, researching some homeless, uh, opportunities or dealing with finding solutions, I should say. Sweet Home was already trying to do this. Um, and, and I was working with them on, on certain details and it hasn't really worked out because their, their relationship of working with the, pastoral alliance and finding a location and not bringing the city in as a partner, made it difficult for them. But I love the fact that City of Lebanon is looking at, we want to take ownership in this situation from the, uh, from a, a leadership point of view and figure out what's best for the city. So I, I don't have, uh, a necessary agenda and a, that on purpose, because I think that we have lots to do. You guys are doing, I mean, you guys are doing tremendous job on, on dealing with the, the situations and dealing with issues and, and the, you know, from water treatment plant to, to your goals and your missions and, and what's going on. So for me to come in and say, I want to do this, I didn't think that that was right yet. But I am a passionate individual and I've done a lot of, um, of, uh, work for various, uh, stakeholders and various, uh, families and, and, so I'm ready to be passionate. I just don't want to put that out yet because I wanna, I want to work within the system and work for the system and make it work because united we stand.
A follow up.
Go ahead, Wayne.
You mentioned, uh, having the right housing, diversity of housing. What's your opinion about tiny homes and locations where eventually the state's probably gonna tell us where we're gonna put them? How do you feel about that?
For the right family, for the right situation, I think it works. Right now, City of Albany is looking at doing this and they're probably ahead of some of the other cities because they reached out to various entities to see if they can do this because they have some, some land. I'm, I'm not against tiny housing at all. Um, I'm not sure it'd be right for me, but, but I think that, um, you have, various different, different types of housing for different types of families, depending on their budget, depending on, on the way they want to live. I'm not against that. What I, what I want to make sure, what I would like to make sure is, is, you know, you're aware of what's going on in the economy right now and this, this, you know, I, I'm just afraid of a bubble bursting and families being hurt. And not, I'm seeing a, a depression or anything like that coming, but I'm just concerned that we are ahead of this, this tide that might cause City of Lebanon, the town, to choose. Because folks, they can't, they're rent right now and, and as soon as the landlords, uh, can collect and, and can move them, there's gonna be a problem there. The homes that are being bought at, at, I think, above asking price right now, that, uh, you know, that the lenders are making sure that the folks that are buying these homes can afford these homes. And we want to make sure that the job that we have in the community and the area still here, uh, six months, a year, two years from now, so that folks can afford the home that they bought. Well, I'm not, I'm not against tiny homes. I think they're a good idea for the right situation.
Thank you.
Jason?
A quick follow up, Mr. G, on, uh, you mentioned communication a lot and you mentioned, uh, stakeholder involvement. And I, I think. And I, I think that's important. But what's your plan to, you also mentioned your, the opinion of your ward. What's your plan to involve your ward or how do you look to get that public input if you are selected as a counselor? And how do you plan to take that public input and bring it to council?
Good question. Thank you. I've already started talking to folks in my neighborhood. Unfortunately, I don't want, I didn't want to say that, you know, this is not an election. So I didn't want to, to do too much, but I've been talking to folks. I've been talking to my neighbors. I've been talking to, to the people that come into my, my office and making a lot of phone calls. I've talked to, to, you know, the mayor of Albany, for example. I've talked to Ms. Kate, Amy Kate, a new elected leader there. And what I have found is that if we're willing to tell you what their issues are, I'm willing to listen. That doesn't necessarily mean we have the answers. But I think that listening to folks and bringing those concerns to the council is probably the easiest thing to do. One of the things that I do, I, I'm a networker. I'm a relationship builder. Like to talk to folks. I like to meet with folks. Coffee with your counselors, something that I think will work. It's worked in other cities and I like to be able to do that. And I believe that being available freely conduit for people to speak with you, whether it means like a coffee with your counselor or through electronic opportunities. So that's probably one of the easiest things for me to do because that's my nature. Creating relationships, talking to folks, staying approachable is very key. And I, I'm out there a lot because I do so much. Connecting with people in my ward might be probably the hardest part of that because you have to make sure that they live in your ward. But connecting with folks and, and bring that to the council by any means necessary, I think is, is, is key. So communication for me is number one. I, I'm big on that, very big on that. Hope I answered that. It was a bit verbose. I apologize.
Any other follow-ups? Karen?
Sir, you mentioned homelessness. Do you have an idea, a plan of how we as a city can tackle that issue? You know, you expand upon that a little bit?
Sure. Many years ago, I was involved in Big County's homelessness issue, which was huge. And at that time, they developed an organization, they developed an entity called the Homeless Trust. One of the things that I wrote a white paper on very early on, and that there were two types of homeless individuals. And that was folks that are temporarily homeless, you know, they lost a job, something happened. And no matter what happens, they're going to get back on their feet. They just need help. If you're there to help them, fantastic. But the other is your habitual homelessness and that usually has to do with some mental health issues. Mental health, bugs, just making poor decisions that they just can't, for those poor decisions. So organizations such as One Next Door, Habitat for Humanity, example. That's the type of agency, an organization about, the, the word, word escapes me right now. Building upon and building upon to the self-sustained, uh, self-sustainability. Key is, is self-sustainability to help folks out of that generational poverty, get out of that generational situation that keeps you and your family there. So I believe, for example, that your, your question was how to deal with it. Let's say that, that we do create legal encampment for, for homeless. That by itself won't make a difference. That makes a difference for the community because maybe it is, you know, a little cleaner. I just came off, I came out of Salem yesterday and got off I-5 and what I saw was just unreal. It was, was pretty, it was filthy, it looked unhealthy and, and it looked ugly. Unrightfully, not for the people that live there, but for the city. I mean, like, how could you, you know, do that? Don't know what their situation is. Maybe they're working on it, et cetera, et cetera. But my point is if we don't have services for whatever idea we come up with, that idea won't work as well. You have to provide access to mental health. You have to provide access to drug rehab. You have to provide access to, to sustainability or programs that create sustainability because unfortunately, it will happen again. When I was in charge of, of food banks and, and other programs, one of the things that I hated was helping family. And then next month or next week, we're right back there again. And if you don't have a method of providing some services to help folks come up with some better ideas, help improve their way of life, help improve their decisions, help improve their mental health, then we're always in a recipe of just continuing to do the same thing over and over and over again.
Any other follow-up? Okay. Last up, we got Karen.
Do you have any additional comments or questions for the council?
Well, only question I have, I have two questions, more than one of the comment. We all see, have this idea of, of housing and, and housing affordability and what's going on. And is there a plan for us to kind of get in front of that in case there's, there is that debacle that I mentioned before? Writing affordable housing or, or working with locals to ensure that if that happens, we don't see families losing their homes. Maybe that, that was mentioned when we, when the question of the tiny homes, maybe that's part of the plan. Is there one?
There's, there's not a specific plan. Our, our development director's been working really hard on those kinds of things. And I, I don't think we have anything very specific. I think it's kind of a whole bunch of different things. You know, you look at the Applegate, the new Applegate one that's out off Airport Road.
Right.
That is amazing. That's for veterans. You look at the Garden View Apartments is low-income seniors. Tons of housing there. I, I mean, it's really helpful. It's still not enough, but we're, we're getting some good stuff. And Kelly's on here. Maybe she could just give a, a quick little synopsis of what's going on.
Sure. I figured I'd jump in if you needed my help. Um, like with any problem, there's not a singular solution. And, and so we are in a category of a city called a severe rent burden category. That means that there is at least 25% of our population or more that is paying at least 50% of their income towards housing and utilities. What this means is that we have a responsibility to try to address that. And so each year, we get together with our, our planning commission and we hold a public meeting to discuss it. And we try to come up with some solutions for it. I, I think by the fact that over the last year, we've reduced this severe rent burden category by at least 2.7%, which is a pretty big jump in a singular year. That indicates that we're doing the things necessary to try to provide additional housing. Our city council and planning commission and city as a whole have a very progressive planning agenda in terms of our development code, which allows for a large number of housing opportunities within a large swath of the city. This provides the ability to provide apartments, duplexes and middle housing in the vast majority of the city, which provides the, the next step for residences to be able to move within the system. By providing more apartments, it provides those that are paying too much for single-family homes to live in because that was the only option. It provides them the option to move into something more affordable. And then it provides an option for those living in apartments, the ability to buy homes as their starter homes as well. And so we do have a system. Our comprehensive plan encourages diversity of housing. We are compliant with the state regulations in terms of housing and we're currently working on a new code update, which will be coming in before the planning commission and the city council on additional amendments to further comply with the state requirements in terms of allowing for duplexes and such. And so there's no singular answer to your question. But I think that the Lebanon Development Code is incredibly progressive in its, its efforts to provide that, that opportunity to, to enhance housing for all, basically.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. That's fantastic. It's amazing. I'd love to be part of that.
Trey, did you have something to say?
No, I was going to say something and that's been exactly what she followed up with.
Okay, thank you. I just saw you look like you'd motion. Okay, and then, Gamil, did you have something else? You said there was a second one?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to offer my condolences for Commissioner Lindsay. And I know he was a huge part of the community and I feel for, for him and his family. And lastly, I, I ran across the police department, the app. What an amazing app. We really need to make sure that every resident in Lebanon has that app on their phone and uses that. And whoever the idea that was, it was amazing. It's fantastic. And we should all have that. Great job.
Good old PD.
And thank you for this opportunity. I, I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And any other questions, follow-up on the counselors? Okay. All right, we're going to have you go back into the room for a minute or two. And we're going to have a discussion and we'll bring you back in in a few minutes. Thank you. Okay, looks like we're good. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll open it up for discussion. Who would like to speak first? Nobody? Go ahead, Rebecca.
I'll do it. I, I really liked both of them. I think either one of them could, could do a great job. I think if, if you just take the written submissions, Mr. G's was a lot beefier, a lot meatier. There was a lot of things to learn about him in that application. I liked that he has no agenda. I'm really leery of anybody who wants to be on city council. So I'm always like, why do you want to do this? Do you understand how difficult it, it can be at times? So he was very articulate and he has been really dialed into everything that we're doing. He asks me questions all the time about what's going on at city council. He has very intelligent questions because he's paying attention. David, I don't know very well. He seemed very nice. I liked that he was really pro-growth. He seemed to lack a little bit, a, a more of maybe knowledge about what we do or how we do it. Maybe, maybe it was just, he said, I'm not quite articulate, which clearly I'm not being right now. So, but he knew, I loved that he knew police officer stats. He knew that, you know, according to the FBI, we should have 2.1 per, you know, whatever. Maybe that's some of Karen's influence. I don't know how he came about that, but I really, I, I liked them both. But Mr. G, I think, came out on top of that.
Okay. All right, let's go down to Wayne Dykstra.
I like them both also, but I think the leadership that Mr. G has, I think he's going to be a great asset to, particularly in our homeless area.
Okay. Michelle?
Um, I think both, I think David with his background on planning commission would be a good candidate. But for me, Gamil really outshone with his, the fact that he delved into two, as well, the 2040 plan. I think that's very important to me just because that is what we have decided will be, you know, the future and for our community as a group. Referencing that was very important for me. And I think Karen, or Karen, sorry, Rebecca really hit it on the head too with his acknowledgement of not having, coming in with a passionate agenda. I think that's very important for our community. And knowing, I don't know him really, but I've seen him. I see, especially pre-COVID, right? He, he is a networker and someone that is very open and seems to connect really well with the public and with, I assume, friends and business folk. So I think he would be an excellent addition to council. And he had my edge certainly for scoring when I went through it, but.
Okay. Jason?
I don't, I also don't really know either one of these, but I, but I know Mr. G, so I know what you're talking about. Counselor Steinhebel. He is very much out and about in the community. He's very involved in a lot of different things, at least was pre-COVID. Because I would see him at a, a number of the events that we attend as counselors and, and see him there. So I, while he mentioned he's not born and raised here, he definitely has a, a passion for this, this town. And the people of it and what happens in this town. So I can appreciate that. I'm sure that Mr. McLean does as well. You don't, you don't sit on a glamorous position like Planning Commission for, you know, for the fame and fortune, that's for sure. So he obviously has a, a great deal of, of love for this community too, to do that. I think in the end, for me, it kind of comes down to there's, what I, what I got out of this today was that I saw two different outlooks on our community. I saw, I saw one person, and the funny thing is they kind of addressed a lot of the same things. I saw one person look at it and categorize it and classify it as one thing. And then I saw another person look at it and categorize it as another thing or, or define it. One was glass half-empty, one was glass half-full. There was definitely a positive vibe off of Mr. G. It just in the language that he used as compared to Mr. McLean and some of the terms and language that he used to describe people who are our constituents and who live in our community and their neighborhood. So I, I think he, not to mention, when I got his application, I, I actually emailed Kim and I said, did I not get the other candidate's information? Because I have this robust package from one and the other one, I won't have it. And, and it was, you know, no, that's, that's what's there. So I think he, that's, I, that's, I hope, what kind of effort he will put out as a counselor. In that he, he goes the extra mile. He's proud of what he does. He wants to show you what he does. And one of the notes I wrote down here, he reminds me a lot of, of you, Paul, in that I think he'd be a real ambassador for Lebanon. And he would take that role on willingly and, and really, I think he would really excel in that role as an ambassador for our city council and for our city. So I really, I really liked what I heard from him today. I was kind of curious what I would hear. Because again, I don't really know him. And so when I saw him on paper, I was impressed. And then his, his words backed up what he has on paper and I was impressed with.
All right, how about Wayne or East King?
Well, I thought both, obviously, were good candidates. Mr. G had an edge on my scoring in terms of, I think, his background that he's had in his, in his involvement in other communities, as well as this community here. He's very articulate. I think he, life is fun for him. Think he'd be an excellent ambassador in the community and for the community. Very likable individual, Mr. McLean is, as well. But I just think that Mr. G is the candidate that I would pick and would vote for.
Okay. And Karen?
Um, I agree with kind of what everyone's been saying. I think both bring different strengths. Yeah, especially, well, they both bring different strengths. I think Gamil has a little bit more diversity in, in some of the things that he has done and been, and, and exposed to. I think kind of the, the way he sort of sees things, I, I, I think because he is has done many different things and involved in the has done many different things and involved in the community as he is, I think he could be a good asset. Again, I like them both. Again, they both bring different things to the table. I do think that Gamil probably took the edge there, just for some of the way he wants to see and do things. So I would probably, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Both candidates are amazing. I was really happy just in seeing both of them. The, with David, I know him personally, not great, but I, I know him a little bit as a customer and through town and his wife. And his work on the planning commission's been great. He's dedicated to it. I love that experience. I think that's really an important thing. I did the planning commission route and I think it's really helpful when stuff comes to council, that background. Mr. G, I don't know very well, but I have seen around town and know how active he is. I think he's got a great, just a great personality for getting along with people. I, I agree with all of you. I think that probably the edge would be going over to Mr. G. So at this point, it was pretty unanimous. So I would take a motion and, and then we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept Mr. G's application and appoint him as a counselor to replace Counselor Stoudt tonight.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to appoint, we'll call him Mr. G and Gamil Nasser as our new counselor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
My dog opposes.
Yeah. I, I want to add to that just for a second if I can. Some of you know, I'm going to be moving out of my ward. So I was really happy to see two good candidates. There's, it's possible that we, that we may do this again sometime soon. So just gonna say, keep that in mind.
Okay, very good. And in talking is Kim. Kim, are you following us here?
Yes, I am.
I figured you were. In the next meeting, that's when we will be doing the swearing in, correct?
We had put in the notice that we would do it at the April meeting.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. And I believe Nancy, we're gonna try and do somewhat of an in-person, maybe hybrid for that meeting. Is that correct?
For April? I think we are working, we're working on the technology to do of what could be counselors in person at Sandy M Station and everybody, most everybody else via Zoom. We're working with the school board who would like to also meet in person, but has the same challenges in terms of room size and public participation. So we're trying to work together on a, the tech pieces of that to make that more fully functional. Some of it has to do, I think, with the PA system and making sure the sound works and cameras work. We've, we've kind of talked about the, the one camera in this room that makes it very difficult to see anybody's face here. As opposed to you all that we see on screens where we can see people's faces and, and recognize you a little easier. So I think we're trying to figure out how to best deal with that with some tech issues. So that's in, in planning. I can't guarantee it at this point, but we'll hopefully be there.
Thank you. Okay, if we, IT, if we could bring in the two candidates back?
Absolutely.
There's David.
Hey, Paul.
Hello?
Hello.
And we're waiting for other candidate?
He's here.
There.
Oh, he's there. Okay, it's the second page, sorry. Okay. I want to thank you both, David and Gamil. You guys were both fantastic. We appreciate your answers and candidness. And the council has discussed it. And with all of your qualifications, you're both could do this job really well. It was a very difficult decision. And at this point, the council has decided that Gamil Nasser will be our next counselor and he'll be sworn in at the next meeting. So there is, David, I'm just gonna say that you'll probably catch us on, on the replay of the video. The counselor Grizzle said she's moving out of her ward. So there's probably another opportunity maybe down the road. So we appreciate it and we appreciate all your work on the planning commission. You do a great job over there.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Camille.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I do have one question.
No, you don't get any questions.
Okay.
Just kidding, go ahead.
I did a lot of research looking for this question about whether or not a hat is allowed. Person meeting.
You for a meeting? Hey, on Zoom, you can have your dog at your feet, I hear. He's just ignoring me. He's.
Your whiny dog.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, well, thank you guys. And next meeting, I don't, I can't remember if I said it with both of you. Next meeting in April, that'll be with the swearing in is, and we'll, we'll contact you and get you all up to date on that stuff. Get, get you set up. So thank you both, you guys. Really appreciate your time. It was great interview. It really, really was. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council members. Thank you. Do you proud?
Thank you both.
All right, good. Okay, next up, we've got city managers report, Nancy.
Oh, good evening. I'm gonna keep it short tonight, I hope. Just a reminder, we have now done all of the, what, year-long delayed utility turn offs. All of our accounts are current. We will continue to move forward with lock offs as, as we go forward in time, but they will all be for current accounts. So that's good news. Most of our customers have been able to pay or make payment agreements. So we feel like that's been beneficial. And frankly, a lot of them paid before we did lock offs. Just giving them the deadline that said they really did have to make payment was good. We are working to try and get a doodle poll out for the task force on homelessness. Doodle polling is kind of new for some of us. So we've got a little learning curve we're working through there. But to start trying to bring in some information, there are probably two or three dozen bills moving or not moving through the legislature right now about homelessness. So we're gonna want to pull that all together. And then we have issued a temporary car camping permit for the church that's at Williams and Milton to put in, I think they have four spaces for RV slash car camping. They, when they filed their application, they did have a porta potty in, but not a hand washing facility. So we've notified them, they need to have hand washing and trash disposal put in place. So that's moving forward. Good news that Lynn County continues at the moderate status. So continue to enjoy your dinners out at restaurants.
Yes, yes.
And then we got notice, the, the federal COVID-19 relief package passed today, expected to be signed by Biden before the end of the week. Preliminarily, the city of Lebanon is looking at a $3.5 million allocation. We've spent it six times over now as staff. So just don't even think you're.
No raise.
We have, we have like four bullet points on what it can be spent on and no additional guidance. And we are expecting some pretty significant guidance coming from treasury about what we can and can't spend that money on. So clearly any COVID expenses, but it will cover lost revenue. So we are looking at lost revenue for our utilities for the senior center and their activities for library, the, the activities that they haven't been able to hold. It can be spent on water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. We aren't really sure beyond that, what it, what its limitations are. So we are waiting for additional guidance before we actually write checks to anybody. But we are expecting that we can pull together a plan and get it out to the council, at least with some alternatives to consider. And good news on, on the part of the city of Lebanon for that. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Nancy. Nancy, question, Jason?
You mentioned the church parking lot. And one of the things that, that I think is important to point out that we should probably jump ahead on and get in touch with them about is the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, the Oregon Fire Marshal's Association, Oregon Fire Chiefs Association have all come out and discussed some incidents that have happened in other jurisdictions. And there's a concern for high potential for carbon monoxide poisoning when those campers are using their vehicles for heat during the night, whether it's a car or an RV or generators. And those, those fumes are then being induced into the vehicles and jurisdictions have seen deaths and significant carbon monoxide illness incidents from that. So one of the recommendations is to supply those campers with a battery powered carbon monoxide detector that they can place inside the vehicle, should they be sleeping, they could alert them to that and they can mitigate the situation.
Thank you. That's not one that we had considered. And, and I would say that in the legislative bills moving forward about allowing RV and car camping and parking lots, that, that also is not an issue that's being addressed. So Fire Marshal Group may, I would say.
Yeah, the dash one is hopefully, yeah.
Is, is there a requirement for a smoke alarm in an RV?
There is at the time of sale.
At the time of sale?
Yeah, it's very similar to.
But they can disconnect it whenever and that, yeah.
Yes, private domicile, private domicile. So the, the fourth amendment protects them for their privacy in that regard.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
Any other questions? Trey?
Your point, Jason, was that the, the fourth amendment protects them from what?
We don't, they have privacy and they have expectations of privacy in their private domiciles. And we don't have the ability as a, as a fire jurisdiction to enforce code requirements on private domiciles beyond the planning stage.
Yeah, I mean, kind of like you could do, you could do voluntary inspections for safety, like you do with businesses around town and all that kind of stuff. Cause each time you come in our office, we have to spend a bunch of money to upgrade stuff.
Yeah, that's why you're so safe.
Anything else? Okay, items from council? I have something real quick that I went out to dinner for the first time in one year. Saturday night, went to Bigfoot Grill. You probably saw it. There was a big steak on my plate. Oh, it was amazing.
There was.
Oh.
He eats all of that?
Oh, no. It, it was two meals. You, you can't go to Bigfoot Grill and eat it all in one meal. That's like a two to three meal thing when you go there. But it was great. It was just so nice being out, seeing the community, seeing the restaurants open and everybody's following the rules. It just looked really great. And it, and it was, it was awesome to see that happening. It felt good to get out. So that, that's my thing. Public press, do we have any press here tonight? Brett? I think they're just following in on the streaming nowadays.
Yes, I know that like the new era, their, their reporter just watches live or they'll get YouTube the next day.
Okay, I just want to give them an opportunity. Our next scheduled council meeting is March 24th, two weeks. It's gonna be at noon, an electronic regular meeting. It's gonna be a work session. And that is, there's a whole bunch of stuff that, that we're gonna be going through and we'll get your information on, on what we'll be going over during that. And anything else? Seeing none? Thank you. I'm really happy the way the interviews went. It was amazing. You guys did a great job. Thank you for being patient. And everybody have a great week. Take care.
Thank you.
Me too.
Bye.